The council's president and myself and Councilman Waterman. Okay, we have several or four people coming up for the cultural council. First up, Julian Culver.
Hi, good evening.
Name, address?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So my name is Julian Culver. I live off of One Wall Street, just down the street here in Attleboro. Been in Attleboro for about three years, moved here in September of two thousand twenty-two, from Houston, Texas, actually. So, glad to be here.
And a little bit about, you know, why you want to be on the cultural council? And a little bit about what makes you feel that you can be on the cultural council?
Yeah, so, I mean, excellent question. First and foremost, you know, I believe in public service. I believe in the value of it as well, and I would love nothing more than just to, you know, share my experience and skill set in this capacity to serve first and foremost the citizens of Attleboro. Second to that, I'm also an artist, and I know a large part of the work with the committee in this council is reviewing grants and kind of giving a sense of how we can expand access to opportunities around art and culture in different capacities. And that's a lot of what I do in my own work at Brown University as a research scientist, where I evaluate and assess different kinds of programs, some teaching as well. So I do have a sort of, I don't know, cachet, if you will, in terms of understanding things around different cultures and different experiences and backgrounds as well. So, yeah, so that's why I think I am a good person to add on the board.
All right, any questions, councilors?
I don't have a question, but thank you for being such a new resident and be willing to give back to the community, and it sounds like you'd be a perfect fit, so thank you.
So, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Councilman Waterman?
Well, I was gonna get all that. And I believe we have a growing city as far as cultural events go. Because we'll be having a new theater, we hope, downtown, at Union Theater sometime next year, if everything goes according to oil. And if not, soon afterwards, I would expect. We've got a number of theater groups, and I would expect that the need for more funds to help these different groups will definitely be there, so appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, you're welcome.
Great, any other questions, comments? Well, great, thanks, Julian, I appreciate it, and you'll be hearing from us soon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Benjamin Shalat. So, name, address, and a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Ben Shalat. I live at, that's okay, thirty-eight Michael Road in Attleboro, moved here in two thousand twenty. And so, for the last five years, I served on the PTO Board at Hyman Fine Elementary School. And now that my son has, you know, his time has moved on from Hyman Fine, I was looking for a new outlet to fulfill my desire to volunteer for the community. And so, through my work at Hyman Fine, I had become familiar with the Attleboro Cultural Council because the school had received multiple grants through the years, and I knew that they were looking for some additional assistance with volunteers, and so I decided to apply. In addition, I think serving on a city board aligns very closely with what I do professionally. I currently work with graduate students who are training to be the next generation of leaders in public service, and so many of the students I work with are going on to work in local, state, federal government, nonprofit management, and consulting. And so I think there's a nice professional connection volunteering with the board as well.
That's great. No, I appreciate you being here, and obviously, as I was saying earlier, it's a pretty, I mean, it's amazing the talent that is coming up in this cultural council, and it's going to serve the city very well. So, thank you. Questions, anybody?
I could only say that it's still a growing, it's gonna grow here. You're gonna, you could even end up having to, having more difficult choices, if I anticipate correctly, in the city, because I think we're gonna become more and more of a cultural center. And that's where the, that's where the difficulty comes. How do we, how do we piece out this, you know, this fixed amount of money that the state sends us? But also, hopefully, you can advocate with the state.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I think it's a good problem to have, actually.
It is, yes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, great, thank you, sir, appreciate it, and we'll be talking to you soon.
Great, thanks so much.
All right. Laura, please.
Hi, Laura Haju, eighty-seven Evergreen Road. Just a little bit about myself, I've been living in Attleboro for about twenty-five years now. I know, baby face. I always have to, like, preface that people kind of look at me like. But first generation, so my parents came here in nineteen ninety-nine and been there ever since, I can't leave even if I wanted to. I have a bachelor's degree in communications with a focus in PR and advertising from Rhode Island College, currently work in sales, but I've worked in marketing. I really have a passion for storytelling, and I think part of the reason why I really wanted to join the cultural council is because there's so many opportunities to tell different stories. Having lived here for almost my whole life, I have the opportunity to kind of see how it's evolved and not, you know, not just tell our story, but kind of tell our future as well.
Well, I appreciate it very much. Yeah, I was, when you said twenty, been here for twenty-five years, I'm like, even that old?
Baby face. I can thank my parents for the genes, though.
Yeah, very lucky, very lucky. Any questions, councilors?
No.
No?
Sounds like you have a good background.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Laura, you'll be hearing from us soon.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, Allison, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Allison Totoro. I live at thirteen sixty Park Street here in Attleboro. I am a public defender here in Massachusetts, so I primarily do criminal defense in Fall River and Attleboro District Courts, as well as Bristol County Superior Court. I also am a member of the Southeastern Massachusetts Festival Chorus, so I know the importance of giving grants to the, these community organizations, and how important they are for these arts organizations to run, which is primarily why I would like to be on the Attleboro Cultural Council. I also, knowing my background, I think I would be able to advocate, as you had mentioned earlier, for, to the state to obtain more money for Attleboro, to give out grants as well.
Well, great, I appreciate it, and this is quite the group, and I think you're all gonna be an incredible addition to this cultural council. So it's, I'm still amazed at how this team has gotten put together, so this is great. Any questions, comments?
Your advocacy is much appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, because we're growing.
All right. Well, Allison, thank you very much, and you'll be, as we was discussing, you'll be hearing from us very soon, the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Allison, take care. All right. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve the following appointments to the cultural council, turn next by February twenty twenty-eight, supporting documents provided. Okay. Laura Haju, Benjamin Shalat, Julian Culver, and Allison Totoro. Obviously, we just heard from all them, and I think we have a great-
Oh, second.
Oh, second, sorry. All right, so, thank you. We've all heard from all them, I think it's a great group. And we have, we have two more that will be here in the next coming weeks, and we'll hear from them on the next committee meeting that we have. But any questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, so that's all. That's all for Human Resources Veterans Committee, a call for adjournment at five thirty-nine.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we're adjourned at five thirty-nine.
Call ordinances, elections, and legislative matters to order at five thirty-nine. Members of my committee include myself and Councilor Cobus, who are present. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve a twelve-month lease agreement with LHS Associates for rental of pole pads for twenty twenty-six elections.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Okay, so I had some conversations with Sharon Fortune, just to make sure I had enough context on this. I'm sure everyone saw the backup requesting approval to sign this rental agreement for these pole pads. But essentially, the vendor, this is the vendor who we have been using, LHS Associates, they're out of New Hampshire, but what Sharon is looking for is approval for the city to enter into this contract with LHS, so that we can reserve these pole pads for twenty twenty-six. So apparently, their inventory gets reserved fairly quickly, so we want to just make sure we're staying ahead of the curve, and we have these for the state elections. So just for my own edification, I asked Sharon several other questions that I had. First regarding the vendor and the pricing, so apparently this has been the vendor that we've been using for a while. And in terms of pricing, it's pretty comparable with what we've paid. In fact, this is actually less than what we've paid in the past, she said they're running promotional right now, so it's actually a hundred dollars less a pad. And in fact, generally, we've previously gotten about six pole pads, but this time we only need three, so each of them is a thousand dollars, so the rental agreement would be for three thousand dollars. But one thing she did highlight in the communication is that as long as they have approval to enter the rental agreement now, they can reserve those pole pads, but there'd be no exchange of the invoice amount until FY twenty-seven. So, so we don't actually have to think about paying this, it's just a matter of reserving this, and this is something that's required for, for state elections because of early voting. So, so that's the background. Any questions, comments? Yes?
Well, actually, sorry for the ignorance, but what is a pole pad? What is it that they do? Are they in the machine, are they something they have to write, I don't, whatever they-
My, my simple way of explaining it is, I think it's, it's really just an iPad for for early voting. So what it allows them to do is just track who's voted early, so that they have that information come election day, so that obviously people aren't voting more than once.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that concludes the business for ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. I call for an adjournment at five forty-two.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Traffic and transportation community is no business this evening, but we definitely will have business in the near future.
Zoning land use and sustainability committee is canceled for the evening as well.
I'm gonna cancel special committee on confiscation of compensation while I have a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Public safety committee is canceled for this evening.
I'd like to call Public Works to order at five forty-three. A few motions tonight. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to transfer two thousand forty-five dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 five seven eight three zero zero. Citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one four two zero one zero 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 five five three zero one zero. Public Works supplies, street maintenance, to fabricate a new grate to replace the old fencing surrounding the dam at East Pond.
Second.
So, pretty self-explanatory, we just need to repair and replace the old fencing. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to appropriate two hundred, actually, you know what, I'm gonna read the other one first. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve the use of nine thousand forty-five dollars left in contingency from the roof repair project in Fund five three oh four BarTech Center for upgrades to the BarTech Recreation Center.
Second.
So this is in conjunction with the other one, I'm sure you all remember the mayor's communication, the explanation of what the BarTech Center needs. So this motion right here is just to use what's left over from the roof repair project to go towards the bigger project that I'm gonna read next. Does anybody have any questions on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to appropriate two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars from account one zero 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 three five nine zero zero zero. Citywide, undesigned, fund balance, free cash, dormant government, to Fund three five zero four BarTech Center for upgrades to the building.
Second.
Thank you. So, if you recall, this is for boiler, for a new boiler rezoning, so all the areas can pick up, anybody that's been in this building knows how hot and how cold it can be. So this is to fix, to get a new boiler, rezone it so other areas can have heat, like the hallways and such. And again, they're split, so it's heat and air conditioning, because some offices have to use window air conditioners, and so I, I do realize that this is a lot of money, but we all, by living here, know how utilized that building is, and how much people love that building and the people in it. So our community really utilizes this, this building quite a bit, and again, they're using nine thousand dollars from what they had left in a previous project. And also, this is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's with a fifteen percent contingency, and our original quote from RISE was a million dollars. So, this is quite a bit less. So, I really hope that, you know, we can support it. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from account six zero 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 five seven eight three eight zero Waste Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund Capital to account six zero 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 five eight seven zero one one Waste Water Enterprise Fund Skid Steer.
Second.
Thank you. So, I don't know if anybody read anything, but this, this has been on the capital improvements, and, you know, when they talk about the slope mower, it, obviously, it's to mow slopes for the, oh my god, the landfills, excuse me. So this has been on there for a while, and they've needed one for a long time, so this is just a transfer from their account, so they can purchase this. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And then, from the docket of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to strike the following: New business requesting a street name change for Pond Street North, as it is often confused with Pond Street, a new development.
Second.
Thank you. So, I don't know if you all remember us discussing this, and the chief was against this, it wasn't feasible to do, if anybody recalls, so I just wanted to strike it, since it's not going to happen. Does anybody have any questions?
Just, I, I do understand the confusion now, but why would he not want to do that? Or was that gonna cause more confusion?
It's a public, he, he explained it to me, and again, forgive me, because this was a while ago, he said that it was too much of a public safety risk regarding-
Ambulances.
Ambulances, fire trucks, police, et cetera. If you don't feel comfortable, I can certainly-
No, no, I'm, I'm good with, they know better, a lot better about this than I do, so I'm good with his judgment.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion pass- Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, entertain a motion to strike the following. Request to amend water ordinances sixteen dash twelve point two four as follows.
Second.
Thank you. This is the water offense fines that didn't go anywhere. So we'll just maybe revisit some other day. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of September third, two thousand twenty-four, I entertain a motion to strike the following. Request a pedestrian activated audible pedestrian signal for Union Street near the intersection of Mill and Dunham Streets.
Second.
Thank you. So this was one that Jay had had. I feel like the docket, I'm not sure if that docket's right, but I can find out. Because this is pretty old. I had reached out, I had gotten this from Jay a long time ago, and I had reached out to these folks. It wasn't the citizen, the resident that requested it. It was somebody that works for him. And I never heard back from anybody, so I just figured it's been sitting here for a while, so I'd strike it.
And it's an expensive cost, too, as well.
Right. I mean, it's a worthwhile cost, but I just wasn't able to obtain any information from anybody, so I really couldn't move forward with it. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that's all the business Public Works has tonight. I'd like to call for an adjournment at five fifty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Do you want to cancel Public Safety?
I did.
Oh, you did. Sorry. My apologies.
Oh, who's second on Sarah?
I think it's Pamela, but I'm third, so I can cancel. Same property, same name today. Just cancel tonight.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call to order... Five fifty-one. Yeah, five fifty-one. Thank you. President and myself and Counselor Waterman. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to call for a public hearing on December second, two thousand twenty-five, for the following new Class Two license applications. Route One Automotive, Inc., at eight eight three Washington Street, with ten customer spaces, fifty-five display spaces, and forty-eight storage spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Pretty straightforward. Any new license, we'll have the public hearing. So we gotta make sure we call for that. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve the following Class One license renewal applications. Chevrolet Buick GMC of Attleboro at one oh three Washington Street. Eighty-four, actually, it doesn't list the customer spaces. So eighty-four display spaces and two hundred and eighty-eight... Oh, actually, sorry. Eighty-four customer spaces, two hundred and eighty-eight display spaces. And National Band Builders, Inc., at seventy to eighty-four Pine Street, with eight customer and forty-five display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Sorry, that number, large number threw me off, apparently. So I visited both of these. Everything is in order and looks good, and I don't see any issues here. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, entertain a motion to approve the following Class Two license renewal applications. New England Cars, Inc., at nine twenty-five to nine thirty-one Washington Street. Eight customer spaces, forty display spaces. New England Cars, Inc., at nine twenty-three Washington Street. Seven customer and thirty-three display spaces. Paris Auto Body at twenty-one Chartier Street. Nine customer spaces, twenty display spaces. Trusted Auto, Inc., at sixty-four Ploton Street. Five customer spaces, eighteen display spaces. LaShawn Motor Company, Inc., at nine fifty-seven Washington Street. Twelve customer spaces, fifty-five display spaces. Wranglers Plus at eighteen fifty-six County Street. Four customer spaces and twenty display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. These are the ones that I've been to so far out of the list and feel confident taking a lot of these out. I will work on getting the rest of these done. And I know Counselor Dolan had one she wanted to double-check pretty well. So that's on my list, so that'll definitely be held. And then there's some that obviously haven't come in yet that we'll be evaluating as well. So might be a busy year for us. But aside from that, I don't see any issue taking these ones out tonight. But any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I agree. If you do them right, you might need to slow down and get them right.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I just, none of them that I don't put my feet in the park on and I won't take out, so... But again, like I said, these ones all look great, so we're off to a good start at least. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And, let's see. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, entertain a motion to approve the following amusement arcades license application. Chuck E. Cheese at two eighty-seven Washington Street for fifty-nine video games. Market Basket at twelve hundred Newport Avenue with one carousel ride and one mini truck ride.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. The rides are there, operational. No, I didn't ride them or test them. They lit up, but I did not actively...
That's exactly what I was gonna ask.
I was gonna beat you to that.
Pretty conservative guy, so I don't want the city to owe anybody money on my behalf. With that, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, I would call for an adjournment at five fifty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. And I'd like to cancel the IT and Infrastructure Committee and then call the Finance Committee to order at five fifty-five. Tonight, we have five motions to go through. Three are prior-year bills, one to transfer, and then the others, just calling for a public hearing. So let's get started. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to authorize the school department to pay the following fiscal year twenty-five previous year school bills totaling eleven thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. First one's American Tire Distributors for one thousand two hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents. American Tire Distributors, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. American Tire Distributors, twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. And then B and R E-Rate Consulting Services for nine thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Motion is in order. These are previous year bills approved by the school committee. And it's just paying those. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to authorize payment of a fiscal year twenty-five invoice to Flowbird America, Inc., in the amount of a hundred and forty dollars. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill, as there is sufficient funding in Fund two six zero two.
Second.
Motion's in order. This is just a previous year bill. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve expenditures of no more than four hundred thousand dollars from the Special Education Stabilization Fund eight five zero seven for unexpected special education transportation costs incurred during fiscal year twenty-six. A vote was unanimously passed at the school committee during a October twentieth twenty-five, meeting on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion is in order. This is just pre-authorizing spending from the Special Education Stabilization Fund as they're seeing each year that there has been costs like this for transportation, and so this is just getting ahead of it. Just being proactive. Counselor Tavares, excuse me.
Any idea on what they're projecting for, like, the next fiscal year?
I don't have a good projection of exactly how much. But it's, Mason was saying it's consistent with what we saw last year. And, but I don't recall exactly what that number was. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to authorize the school department to pay the following fiscal year twenty-five previous year school bill totaling eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Learn Well for sixty dollars and Porter Melissa for seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Motion is in order. First one's hospital tutoring. The second one is a workshop, AP Stats Workshop. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. God help the kids taking AP Stats. From the docket of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I entertain a motion to hold a public hearing on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to allow the city and neighbor works to make a full presentation to the council and the public regarding the proposal for the five point four nine six acre parcel on, at Highland Park.
Second.
Motion's in order. This is just calling for a public hearing on November eighteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Waterman.
Just, in case anybody's watching, do we know what time that would be?
Whatever time the full council meeting is on, the eighteenth. I would assume seven o'clock, but that's, we would have to talk to President DiLazio.
Yes. Thank you.
On the, may I?
Please.
On the agenda right now, unless President DiLazio decides to take it out of order, they're the last public hearing of the night. So again, I don't know if he'll take it out of order. That's obviously up to him. But just to let you know, it's the last public hearing. We do have the national grid. I mean, those are like two-second ones. And then one's adding the water quality specialist, and then the Kratom one. So I think the Kratom one will be busy, and then the Highland will. So as of now, it's the last one of the night, public hearing.
Thank you. And so the next two items we hold, and then the last thing I want to mention is is there's an FYI, and I don't know if folks looked at the backup information and the report that Mason provided regarding certified free cash and the spending report for what we've spent over from free cash during twenty twenty-five. Sorry. Yes, fiscal year twenty-five. So there's, there was a lot of information in that backup memo that Mason provided, and I encourage everyone to review that. Mason and I talked for a long time about the details there. And some of the things that jumped out to me was, you know, because we were spending so much of that ARPA money, we ended up with three point five million that was carried forward from last year to this year that sort of went into that, that large amount of certified free cash that we had. But there were also a lot of fairly alarming things, talking about potential healthcare costs for next year and all of that. And so as a result, I would have liked to have Mason come down tonight, but he has another, there's some contract negotiations happening tonight. So I've asked him to come back on December second, which is a full council, it's a full council meeting. But so we'll, I've called for a finance committee meeting prior to that at six fifteen, so that Mason and Lynn can come down and sort of talk about the situation and talk about sort of our use of free cash. And so I encourage people to review that memo prior and then have questions. I mean, feel free to reach out to Mason directly, but this will be something good to go over on December second. So, and I apologize that it'll be a little while, but it just, that happened to be the only day that worked with Thanksgiving coming up and all that. Any questions or anything that folks have that they want to ask of Mason for that presentation? Nothing else to stop you, Ed? Okay. All right. That concludes the business for the Finance Committee, and I move to adjourn at six oh three.
Second.
Motion's in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Special Committee on Tax Abatement is canceled this evening.
Special Committee for the Water Investigation is canceled. And the other two special committees are also canceled.
Did you cancel rules and procedure?
Rules and procedure, canceled.
And Mike, did you?
I did.
You did? Okay.
Thanks, everyone.